We're good. Thank you.
All right. And I would like to thank Wes for the job that he's done, serving as the chairperson in the past. I know I was only an alternate for the past year, but I certainly appreciate the guidance and feedback that he's given to the committee throughout the process of what this planning board did last year. So thanks, Wes, for doing that. We do have two new members, Matt and Larry. I thought it would be pretty beneficial if we could have. Is everybody getting feedback, or is it just me?
Yeah, I'll try and figure out who it is.
Okay. I thought it would be beneficial if we could have Chip go over a few things, just as an introduction to our new planning board members, cover a little bit of what the duties and responsibilities are as a planning board, how we function in the village, and then also just a little bit about our responsibilities as village volunteers. You unmute yourself, Chip.
Yep.
Thanks.
Okay, yeah, this will be brief. But, you know, because, but what I will say is, as, before I get started, and most of you are veterans at this, but particularly for you new folks, I do think we're going to want to try to get some, you know, you're all required to have four hours of training a year to serve on a planning board, and I think most of you realize that, but because we've got some new members, I think we're going to want to try to do some training pretty soon for that, because this is not what we're, this very quick overview is not, is going to be sort of 10,000-foot overview of what the planning board does, but it's really important to have a little bit more in-depth analysis of this stuff before we really start making a lot of decisions. So I'm just going to try to cover a few of the basics here tonight. Essentially, in the Village of Williamsville, the Planning and Architectural Review Board has four general areas of responsibility. And just quickly, what those are, the first thing is the Planning and Architectural Review Board is, has recommending authority, that is, it makes recommendations, but doesn't render decisional, doesn't render decisions with respect to any proposed amendments to the comprehensive plan or to the village zoning code. Just also, for those of you who are new, and probably a refresher for everybody, the comp plan in the village enacted, the village has had a couple of comp plans, but its current comp plan, it's called the Community Plan, it's on the website, you should all read it, try to be familiar with it, was enacted in 2010, and there is a, the village is starting to look at the process of updating that. But the significance of the comp plan doesn't directly relate to what you all are going to do on a regular basis, except that the comp plan is really what guides the zoning code. A zoning code has to be consistent with the comp plan, and so the comp plan is sort of the master document, and then the zoning code tries to flesh it out with all the details. And what you guys end up doing mostly is working with that zoning code, which has been adopted to be consistent with the comp plan, but periodically, the village board, whose responsibility it is to enact a comp plan and to enact the zoning code and to amend the zoning code, relies on the planning board to give, make, to review those proposed amendments and make recommendations to the village board. So actually, there is currently a proposal to amend the zoning code by rezoning certain properties in and around South Long Park, well, the South Long Park parcel and other parcels nearby. So that's a perfect example of this function of the planning board, which is to review and make a recommendation to the village board with respect to that. And then, the other core functions, the other three core functions are all decision-making authority, where this board actually makes decisions on applications that are final and binding on the applicants, subject to judicial review, of course. So, and, but, but as a practical matter, one of them, and the first one I mentioned, we don't really do much of in the village, and that is subdivisions. So the village board is charged, or I'm sorry, the planning board is charged with reviewing subdivisions in the village, but only for subdivisions of four or more parcels. I've been the village attorney for 12 years. We've never had, we haven't had one. The village is pretty much subdivided out, now, that's, you know, there's still some large lots in the village, so it could happen, but they're, it's very, very rare, not something we do a lot of, because it's, the village is, is an old, built-out community. So we're not going to really spend too much time talking about that. The village board also has review authority with respect to certain signs. It used to be almost all signs, but last year, or maybe it was two years ago now, the village board amended the sign code with, based on a new code that this board, the planning board, was instrumental in helping develop, that tries to streamline that process considerably and make a number of signs administratively reviewed, that is, in other words, that Tim reviews and approves them, as long as they meet the requirements of the code, but there's still a lot of signs that can come to this board. The new sign code is in chapter 84 of the village code, and you should all be familiar with that as well. And as Tim mentioned, that's available on the village website, but I know, Tim, that, I think you gave them all copies of the design standards, we, if we can, we might want to also provide hard copies of the sign code.
Yeah, I can do the sign code. I didn't do it in this pack, but I'll get that, that's not that many pages.
Yeah. And actually, it's fine, you know, we don't see as many as we used to, the sign code, sign review used to dominate what this planning board has done for the last several years, because there were just so many of them. And then lastly, and most significantly, the, this board has decisional authority for site plan and architectural review. Not all planning boards have decision-making authority with respect to site plans. New York State Village Law, which is identical in this respect to New York State Town Law or New York's general city law, says that either the governing body or can have that authority, or it can delegate that to the planning board, and in the Village of Williamsville, as in most communities, decision-making authority for site plan has been delegated to the planning board. And although architectural review is not something that's expressly authorized or defined in New York State law, the way site plans are, it is unauthorized, municipalities under their zoning authority and general police power are authorized to also create architectural review processes, and the village has done that. And so for most things, almost everything that's subject to site plan review in the village is also subject to architectural review, and those have, are, have slightly different processes, but, but as I'll explain in a minute, most of, where it's applicable, there are design standards that govern both the site plan aspects and the architectural review aspects, and those are really going to be your touchstones, your guidebooks for reviewing applications for both site plan and architectural review. So, site plan and architectural review is only required in the village for developments occurring in the mixed MU, NMU, R3M, and M1, which is the manufacturing district, which, Tim, can I share my screen?
Yep. It says all participants, can you just try it?
Yeah, is it not? Oh, sorry, didn't press share yet.
There we go.
All right, although I'm in the wrong window, so hang on a sec. Where'd you go? So, obviously, the existing members are familiar with this, but this is the zoning map. Is everybody seeing the zoning map?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks. For the village, so the vast majority of the villages are 1, R2, R3, those are 1 and 2 family residential, R1 and R2 are single-family residential, R3 is 1 and 2 family residential. That's the bulk of how the village is zoned. MU is basically along Main Street, NMU northeast corner, southwest, smaller part of the southwest corner, R3M scattered, various areas scattered, that's multifamily residential, and then M1 is this little thing down here, basically, or by the throughway. So that's the manufacturing district. We don't get a lot of applica, not a lot happens down there, but actually, we did recently have actually an application down there. So it's only for projects in those districts, again, M1, NMU, NMU, and R3M that need site plan review. This board does not regulate development of single and two-family homes in the village. Tim does, under the New York State Uniform Code, but it's not required to get site plan or architectural review. So, now, with the exception of the M1, as I mentioned earlier, there are design standards that the village board, again, with the advice and recommendation of the planning board, has adopted design standards for the MU, NMU, and R3M zoning districts, and they're, they're very detailed. They've been changed from time to time, tweaked, I'm sure they'll continue to be tweaked and changed from time to time, but as I mentioned earlier, they govern both, both site issues. So you'll see here, this is in the R3M, this is the site planning aspects of it, but towards the back, as you go further, it gets increasingly more into architectural details and those sorts of things. So these are really what govern, are your review of most applications that are going to come for you are these design standards. So you should all be familiar with these, I, you know, certainly if there, if there's an application that involves a project in one of these, you know, certainly helpful to bring a copy of your design standards with you for the, for the meetings. And so, sorry, I got too many screens going here. You know, the design standards were intended to provide some predictability and clear guidance to applicants, but they also do, and they're fairly prescriptive, but they also do allow for, for design flexibility and, and allows, you know, this board to, to make some decisions in, about how things get developed. And speaking of conditions, you know, an important aspect of this whole process is, this board can impose reasonable conditions on site plan development that are directly related to and incidental to a proposed site plan, that are necessary to mitigate any demonstrable negative impacts of the site plan. So you can't just impose any conditions you want, but as long as they are directly related to actual impacts of the project, generally, that's okay. Now, there are some things that the planning board can't do, and that, and the site plan does not authorize. As most of you are aware, there's, there is a zoning board of appeals in the village that has its own separate authority. That's the board that grants variances. It's also the board that interprets the zoning code, so the planning board has no authority to interpret the zoning code. Any interpretation of the zoning code starts with the code enforcement officer, and if somebody doesn't like his interpretation of it or thinks he got it wrong, that can be appealed to the zoning board of appeals, and that is their job to say what the zoning, what the zoning code sets. If there's no appeal to the zoning board, or if the zoning board makes its determination, both of those things are binding on this board. This board's job is essentially to implement these design standards, essentially, and not to determine whether or not a site plan, you know, complies with, with, you know, is an allowed use, certainly that is not something that this board can do, or determine whether a variance is required. The, the other thing that New York State law is clear about is a decision, is the planning board can't make a decision based on factors other than those enumerated in the zoning code. Zoning is still as common and as well entrenched as it is now, you know, in the last 100 years, I mean, zoning basically got started just about 100 years ago, a little over. It's still, under New York State law, a derogation of common law. So it, which, what that means is, and because municipalities can only act on what powers they have been given or authorized to exercise under, under the general New York State law or the constitution of New York State, that authority is limited. So site plan review has to be based on the elements that are specifically listed in the zoning code to review. Corollary to that is, the planning board cannot make a decision based on generalized community opposition, is if, in fact, an application is consistent with the code, the fact that it's controversial or the people don't like it, is not a basis for denying site plan application. Also, decisions need to be based on substantial evidence in the record. So it's important that, that when decisions are made, that, that we pay close attention to what's actually in the record. By that, I mean, the documents that are submitted or comments that are submitted if there's a public hearing. So those are just some, some general guidelines to keep in mind on some, the procedural aspect of this. So an application will go into the building department, and then Tim prepares, puts a package together essentially, for the planning board, and then it's up to the planning board to sort of decide how it wants to proceed with it. Under our code, public hearings for site plan review and architectural review are optional, not mandatory, but if you ever determine that you think it's in the best interest to hear from the public on, in application, you can decide to schedule and hold a public hearing, but you don't have to. Sketch review is optional under our code, but it's all, you know, I think Tim would probably agree, and I think most of the other planning board members who've been on this board for a while would agree, that it's generally a good idea, kind of helps the process go smoother, because there is a lot of give and take, oftentimes, between an applicant and the board, and what they, what they want to see. So sketch reviews essentially, without having to put together everything that's required for a complete application, is to sort of come in with a concept and get some feedback from the board. But once an application is complete, or if it's subject to a public hearing, once the public hearing is held, our code requires this board to make a decision within 62 days of either of those things, unless it's extended by mutual agreement by the applicant and the board. I will, there's a caveat with that, however, in that unlike subdivision review, site plan review, there's no default approval. So that 62 days is a legal requirement, but as a practical matter, it's not, if, it's not the fact that if you don't make a decision within 62 days, there's automatic approval, that's, that's not, that would happen in the site plan, I'm sorry, the subdivision contract does not happen in the site plan. Our code also has a provision that says prior to denying of any site plan application, we need to give the applicant an opportunity to confer unrecommended changes, and I, I think that's just consistent with the general goal to get to an acceptable design, and, but, but it is an extra step if there were to be a denial. Waivers, we do have a provision in our code, this is something that's required by New York State law, but it is allowed, and so our code does allow this planning board to grant waivers from certain dimensional and design requirements, if they, if the board deems that they are appropriate for dimensional deviations. So say setback is the best, easiest example, those, the board cannot grant a waiver of more than 50%. So if there's a, if there's a 10-foot, you know, setback requirement, you can't, you can't grant 100% waiver, you can't make it 20 feet, but you can make it 15. And certain things you can't grant waivers for. No waivers for overall height of a building, no waivers for minimum or maximum number of stories, no waiver for the minimum number of parking spaces, or the location of parking lots. If an applicant wants to get relief from those, they can seek variances from the zoning board of appeals, but this board can't grant them a waiver for, for those specific things, and again, can't grant a dimensional one for over 50, of over 50%. Just, I'm going to just briefly touch on seeker, because we could have a whole training session and probably should on that, it's a good way to get an hour of your four hours, because it is something that everybody on any land use board really needs to know. So we'll go over that another time, but for projects that are subject to seeker, the basic rule is, the most important thing to understand for present purposes, is that seek, the board, who has the obligation to make a secret determination of significance, that is, to decide whether or not a project might have a significant adverse impact on the environment, has to make that determination prior to granting any approvals that are required. And if a project is subject to multiple approvals by different boards or agencies, this board may or may not have the responsibility to make that determination, in other words, it may or may not be the lead agency. Now, in some contexts, it also, it, multiple boards might have seeker responsibilities, but again, we'll, we can get into the details on that later. But when seeker applies, the important thing that the board needs to know and understand is, you can't make a decision on the site plan application until the seeker process is completed, essentially. However, there are many of the smaller routine projects that will come across your desks or come to this board are exempt from seeker, just because of their size. Seeker has a whole list of type 2 actions, which are statutorily exempt from seeker review, and those do sort of sweep up a fair number of the applications that come before us, so it's, it's not at all uncommon that the projects that come before you will have no seeker review necessary, but bigger projects, like the board has been handling in recent years, a couple of them, certainly, seeker is a huge, huge part of the project. So, so we'll go over that in, in greater detail in a training session, either whether I do it, or, or there's other opportunities for, for training for all of you. So speaking of training, again, as I mentioned, there's a requirement that all members of the planning board receive four hours of training a year. There's ample opportunities to get that training. If you don't get your training, you can be ineligible for reappointment to the board, although the village board can waive that requirement, but the village, I will tell you, I think the village board takes that training requirement seriously and expects and wants all of its members of its land use boards to, to satisfy that training requirement.
Absolutely the truth.
Thanks. So, um, okay, and then I will send out also to all of you, I know Tim is sending you to the design standards, but there are some good resources in addition to the formal training requirements that, you know, are out there and that we'll try to make available to you all. There are a couple of good resources. NICOM, which is New York Conference of Mayors, which is basically essentially the industry group or lobbying group, whatever you want to call it, for cities and villages in New York State, has a really good planning board basics guide, and I will send, send that around, and then New York State Department of State has a very detailed treatise on site plan review, which again, is sort of the biggest chunk of what, what you guys will be doing. There's also other publications on subdivision review, but again, we don't really get those, so I would really focus on the site plan review aspect of, of this. So those are, are some good resources, along with the training that we're going to, we're going to make available for people, and I think that's kind of it for the overview right now. I know I was going to throw in a bunch of stuff at you, I don't expect you all to memorize all of that, but I don't know if anyone has any questions right now about any of that, or, or if there's anything else I didn't touch on that, that you'd like me to touch on, Amy, or anybody on the board?
No, can, can I just ask a quick question? So you had brought up about like a big project and a public hearing, and I know we held a public hearing for Bloker, what, like, what is, I know we don't have an obligation to, to have a public hearing, what about like having a public comment for each application? Like, just on a general basis, say, somebody wants to, you know, put an addition onto a building, and it's not a big project like the Bloker type thing, but like, is there anything in our, I don't want to say code, but is there anything that says we should or shouldn't allow public comment, even if it's not as official as a public hearing?
There, there's nothing in the code that says that, and, and let me just say that there's also nothing, you know, this is a surprise to some people, but, but other than public hearings, no public body in New York State actually has an obligation to let the public speak at a public meeting, other than at a public hearing. However, the village board certainly routinely allows for public comment on things, even outside the context of public hearings, they call suspension of rules at the village board level. And so again, you, you, in operating your own meetings, you guys are, it's up to you guys how you want to conduct those, in terms of whether you want to allow public comment or not. I don't see a downside to it, really, I mean, if, if that's what the board wants to do. The only thing, again, I would caution, is you have to be a little bit careful about, there's absolutely nothing wrong with getting public comment on a, on a project, but, you know, oftentimes, public comments may bring up issues that are completely irrelevant to what you actually have to base your decision on, and as long as you're aware of that and are able to recognize what sort of comments, you know, may bear on your decision-making process. you know, may bear on your decision-making process and which aren't, then that's, that's fine. But if you, if this board wanted to make it as a policy to allow public comment, just like the village board does with its suspension of rules, they could certainly do that. And then still have public hearings on ones on really big projects where, where it seems appropriate. But, you know, I, I think for most applications, it probably wouldn't get too many people taking you up on that because most of the time it's just the applicant who shows up for these things. But, you know, because the village doesn't get, it's not the town of Amherst, the village doesn't get a lot of really large developments. We've had a couple in the past few years, which has been a different experience for the board and for all of us than what happened in a lot, what happens in a lot of other communities. So anyway, that's a long answer here.
Question. The other thing I would add to that is that, you know, the public is always welcome to address their comments in writing to the building department. That would all get passed along to the board as well.
Okay, I was just thinking in terms of, you know, if, if something goes to the zoning board, the residents surrounding that applicant are identified and have the opportunity to come speak at the zoning board. Is, is that something we should consider as far as the planning board as well?
You, you, you can, but I just want to make sure now, unlike the planning board, anything that goes before the zoning board of appeals is subject to a public hearing. And that's just, it's not, that's not a Village of Williamsville thing. That's a New York State law thing. Zoning boards of appeals are semi adjudicatory bodies. Planning boards are not, boards and trustees are not. So New York State, in its wisdom, really created sort of quasi judicial procedures for a ZBA. I'm not telling you that because I think that you shouldn't do, do that. But I'm just saying there's a reason why zoning boards of appeals are set up differently from planning boards and other boards. So they have to have a public hearing on any application. And by the way, for those of you who've been to ZBA meetings or were on the ZBA, you know, it's also what I said with respect to the planning board is also true there. Even though every single application of the zoning board of appeals is subject to a public hearing, I would say 90% of the applications, nobody other than the applicant speaks during that public hearing. But it is just a procedural difference between the two boards.
Does anyone have any thoughts about that? About allowing public comment?
As an outside participant, I would just say you may want to do a case-by-case basis rather than doing it blanketly, of course, just because some, a lot of minor applications would not be necessary, such as your minor sign applications. If you have a couple of business owners along, making sure they don't necessarily get along with the neighbor next door. So a simple awning application, for instance, may get some feedback that would be frivolous in that case, as opposed to a project like it's going on the corner of Main and Elek. You know, I, I would recommend, I guess, that it be a case-by-case basis, but that's just a recommendation.
Any other thoughts?
I agree with Tim. We'll look at it case by case.
So do I, Amy. Chip Razzoni, I, I, I've been there a long time and I agree. Sometimes we could waste a lot of time when I, I think we should pick and choose. It's not a bad idea though. I mean, I like the idea.
Sounds good. All right. Thanks, Chip. Chip, do you have anything else then?
No, although again, I, I would, and I'll talk, I'll talk to the village board about this too. But I, I do think, I mean, I guess maybe I have a question. How, how is everybody doing on their, I mean, obviously our new folks haven't had any training because they're new. How is everybody doing on their training hours? I mean, or maybe ask it another way. Would, would the village, would, would you all be eager to have some training sessions soon? And if so, like what topics would be the top of your list of trying to get some training sessions on? Seeker, open meetings law issues, ethics issues, whatever. Site plan, you know, more detailed view of site plan review procedures.
I would definitely say seeker.
I would agree with seeker.
Is it possible to go over the signage again in detail? Is that possible?
Yeah, we can definitely do that. We could all probably use a refresher on the new code. I know I could.
Chip, does it, does it, is there any sort of requirements for how to go about establishing what these training sessions are or certifying them? Or is it only the village board that gets to decide what's certifiable?
The latter. You guys, you guys decide. You guys can certify anything you want. Anything you think is valuable, you can certify. I've done, I've done sessions, but, and I'm happy to do them. But there's, as I say, there's also lots of other opportunities, planning federations that, that do training too. We just need to keep an eye out for those things.
Sure. I mean, I, I can certainly do a, a series if people are interested in, you know, to sort of reviewing our, our design standards for signs for the MU district, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. They're, they're each worthy of a conversation.
Yeah. I mean, Matt, that's a good, I mean, we, we could easily do four hours of just doing each of our design standards and our sign code. That actually would be four right there. And then plus secrets would be another. I mean, you could do an hour on each of those probably. And it, and it would, I think that would be time well spent, frankly. Because that is really what your guiding documents are for these applications.
Right. I mean, the, the truth is the nine members of this, the seven members of this committee and the two alternates should know only slightly less about these design standards than the zoning board does. So that we should, you know, and it is, I can assure you, it is a painful document to read from beginning to end. So it's, it, it would definitely benefit from a conversational sort of, you know, or even an app like a, you know, a pseudo-application kind of approach to, to understanding how it's written and what its meanings are.
So Matt, could you, could you then present that to the village board to get approval that we could use those as our training hours for the year? If you and Chip do four hours that include the design standards, sign code, seeker, basically everything we need to know?
Yeah, sure.
That'd be great. Okay. You're all set then?
Yeah, yeah. Unless anyone's got any questions or?
All right. Perfect. Let's, uh, let's move on. We really don't have an agenda for the evening. I guess first, let's approve the minutes from the September 8th, 2020.
We're losing you, Amy.
Oh.
You need to, first you need to, if you're starting your public meeting, then you need to call it to order, say the pledge of allegiance.
Oh, sorry, Matt. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
All right. Well, then let's welcome everybody to the October 5th, 2020 planning board meeting. Deb, could you please call roll?
Miss Alexander? Here. Mr. Lester?
He's here, but he's muted.
Mr. Rizzo?
Here.
Mr. Pacer? Mr. Stone? Mr. Stone?
Also here, but muted.
Mr. Zasowski?
Here.
So we said Mr. Pacer? Yes?
Yes.
Here.
Mr. Zasowski. Mr. Carson? Okay. And Ms. Kopa? Excused?
Yep.
And Mr. Trigilio is excused?
Yep.
Okay. Mr. Masters?
Here.
Mr. Greco?
Here.
And trustee Eto?
Here.
Thank you.
You're muted.
Matt, I don't think in the past we said the pledge, but in honor of you.
Oh, okay. Well, if that's the case, then don't worry about it.
No, that's okay. I'm all for it. So let's, let's all say the pledge. Pledge allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag.
Of the United States of America. Into the Republic of which it stands. One nation, under God. Indivisible. With liberty, justice, for all.
Thank you. All right. So the first item of new business for tonight will be the approval of the September 8th, 2020 meeting minutes.
Motion to approve.
Okay. So we have a motion made by Kevin. Is there a second?
I'll second, but I had one addition.
Okay, go ahead, Wes.
When Kate joined the meeting, I talked to Deb earlier about this. I think it said, just said she joined later in the meeting. I think we should put the exact time and that she joined it. I think Deb was going to look up from the recording to see when that, when that was. So I think it was 9:30 ish.
Yes, that was approximately the time that she came.
I, I think that just should be reflected in the minutes.
I think that's a good idea.
So if that, that's the only change, I'll second it.
All right, Wes is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thanks, Deb. All right. So the only new business item on the docket is the village board is looking for feedback from us in regards to some rezoning on South Long. I believe, Matt, you have a presentation for us?
I do. All right. So, um, just a little background for everyone. As Chip had mentioned earlier, we have this comprehensive plan that was written back in 2009. It's made some minor modifications over the years. We're attempting to make a, you know, a major update. It's been over a decade now, but it is still the guiding document for land use in the village for the time being. And the, one of the things that came out sort of as a fallout from the Natali development and the R3M district and the land swap and all these things is a discussion about the appropriateness of the zoning, the overlay of zoning on the parcels that are currently known as South Long Park. And the parks committee expressed concern about the temptation that these zonings create for village boards, past and future, and, and developers who might otherwise want to see something higher density done there. Now, Chip will tell you that it's, as a park, it already has an overlay of protection associated with it in the form of being parkland. It would require alienation through this state legislature. And that's true. But the, the idea that the land swap sort of brought to the fore was that a large swath of, of South Long Park was quite tantalizing for redevelopment in this sort of swapping property sort of scenario. And the parks committee had suggested that this type of, you know, temptation should be, should be maybe mitigated to some degree. Now, most municipalities have some form of open space, recreational, you know, type zoning, park-like zoning that has limited available uses, but is predominantly open space. Wow, that took a long time to open. And we at the village do not, at least not yet. That's also in the works, but the, the short-term solution was to suggest the idea that the village board should downgrade the, the village zoning that applies to these parcels that are predominantly open space to begin with. You know, something I wanted to draw your attention to, the comp plan summarizes at the front about, you know, that there's improvements that are intended to make the parklands better. There's a desire to create, you know, greater access to these spaces. It's recommended that we create some sort of a greenway trail to connect these assets. And that at the time, when this was written, no significant adverse impacts were anticipated with respect to such improvements. However, no one also had anticipated the significant adverse impacts that could be regenerated from swapping that property out and making it developable. The other thing that was, was interesting in here is that it talks about protecting, I don't know where it is. I can't find it. But talks about protecting these assets from outside threats. So with that in mind, the suggestion was to downzone what is currently a mishmash of properties. Now, quickly jumping back in history here, sorry, I'm kind of bouncing around a little bit. Hang on, I gotta get right without, there we go. Okay. So this is the, the zoning map from 1999. This predates the MU district, the NMU district, the R, R3M was in a different form, and it still had multiple what were known as commercial districts, C1, C2, C3, all with vague shades of difference. But the, the significant bit here is in relationship to South Long Park. So what everyone traditionally identifies with as South Long Park is what's known as 40 South Long, which until very recently encompassed the, the ball diamond, the soccer field, what is now the, you know, the parking lot there, as well as the DPW parcel on the north side of Village Square Lane and Village Square Lane itself, including the one-way kind of dog leg that DeVoleo uses as a parking lot and whatnot up to Main Street. Also, what is sort of traditionally understood to be, you know, parkland is, is 86 South Long, which is currently what everyone identifies with as the Lehigh Memorial Trail and the Lehigh Depot. And up until the land swap, this was also the area of the village side yard for DPW. 150 Milton is actually part of the old Darling property. 76 South Long is the yellow warehouse that is internet, belongs to International Chimney. And then as you head down South Long and you get to Garden Parkway Extension, there's this little oddball sort of key-shaped bit of C1 that kind of carries over from a bygone area, when all of this was some form of railroad-related industrial, commercial sort of effect. Now, when, when the zoning codes and design standards were altered to create MU, NMU, R3M, these C1, C2, C3 districts were obliterated and their perimeters were encompassed into these new sorts of designations. So you can see here that, that weird little key-shaped bit on the end of South Long, that was dubbed NMU. That C2 district that was 40 South Long and, and International Chimney all got scooped up and put into MU. All of Lehigh Memorial Trail that's in with, within the village, as well as 150 Milton and the parcels that are now known as the Natali Development, were all scooped up and put into this R3M. The primary neighborhood zoning around this is an R3, which is one and two family residential properties. Now, the thing that's interesting about South Long and those designations that is different than the whole rest of the village is that island that is different than the whole rest of the village is that Island Park is identified as part of the zone that it's surrounded by, R2. Same with Garrison. Glen Park is a little bit odd because of its proximity to Main Street. It's scooped up in the MU District, but the balance that's north of Glen Avenue is all scooped up and is associated with its primary residential surrounding district, R3. So the suggestion that the Village Board is making is to downgrade the parkland to be R3. And this we see as being consistent with the, the comp plan. It also has the effect of taking away this tantalizing chunk of property that was the, the crux of this land swap idea. Now, something that we've done this year for the first time is we have subdivided off the DPW property. We've also subdivided off Village Square Lane, so it's a proper right-of-way now. So South Long Park now is its own entity. More importantly, with the land swap, and I'm gonna move this into position, the land swap has created this opportunity in here where the section house, which is tucked into this little corner, and this portion of 150 Milton is now integral with the north half of South Long Park. So for the first time since the park was created, you can go from parkland to parkland to parkland and all the way down Lehigh Trail in a way that had never been available before. Now, in looking at the NMU District in particular, we have one, two, three odd little parcels that are on the east side of South Long. Now, 96 South Long, which is the longest of them here, is, was a zombie property that the village acquired about a year and a half ago, and has since torn down and is currently utilizing as some of its supplemental space for the side yard, because we haven't found a permanent home for that yet. That is not its long-term intent, however. It is intended to eventually become parking lot to serve the Lehigh District Railroad. Immediately adjacent to that is, is a rental residential property. So, and a very, very, very tiny little parcel that is not really appropriate for a high-density commercial mixed-use type zoning. Last is down here is this little triangle piece, which I understand is functioning as some form of commercial enterprise, warehouse, brewery-like activity right now, and has always been some form of odd little miscellaneous commercial zone. But again, the question of applicability rises. Is this small little parcel that's oddly shaped and, you know, as it hearkens back to a day when, when this wasn't a neighborhood, is this an appropriate use? Is the NMU District an appropriate use for that parcel? So the suggestion was that we grab everything on the east side of South Long, and we downgrade that to R3, which matches the neighborhood immediately surrounding it. The one hotspot in this is 76 South Long. So 76 South Long, as I said, is the yellow warehouse for International Chimney. In its current zone of a mixed-use commercial zoning, it is an existing non-conforming use. It theoretically could not be constructed and occupied in its current use today under its current zoning. The bigger question is whether or not it is appropriate to remain in its current zoning as an MU classification. The idea being that that single parcel, which I like to say kind of looks like a thumb sticking in the side of the, of the residences, could theoretically be constructed with the same relative density of, say, the Williams or even to that extent, you know, the type of development you would expect to see on Main and Garrison. Now, obviously, the parcel itself is significantly smaller. It's irregularly shaped. It would be difficult to develop to that level of density. But the question becomes, is a five-story building with mixed use of residential and commercial on that parcel, the vision, the future vision of how that space should be utilized? Or is it better that it be something less dense and maybe even, you know, in the grand scheme of things, the, the, the community plan has even envisioned the idea of the village acquiring that and giving that parcel back to the park to complete the parkland. So, that is the, the rezoning suggestion that has been made. We've gone through the process of, you know, the subdividing and combining of parcels as needed to clarify all the property lines. We have, you know, essentially gone through most of the procedural steps at this point, save, I think maybe, Chip, have we even done, we must have done the EAF at some point, or maybe we haven't yet, but-
We, I, there is an EAF, but the board hasn't made its secret determination yet.
Right. I mean, but, you know, again, with zoning, it, chances are it's better than average that it's probably a negative declaration anyway, but-
That's what I was envisioning.
Yeah, I mean, but there are some procedural steps that have yet to be taken, but are to be taken shortly. So I've made this presentation to the zoning board. The zoning board made the recommendation back to us that, you know, we pursue what's being proposed. I'm here tonight to ask the planning board to do similarly.
Matt, do you have a picture of what the proposed zoning would look like?
Um, how do you mean?
My screen is still the zoning map from 1999.
Yeah, we're still, Matt, we're looking at the, we're looking at the old one.
Oh, you are? Oh, my God!
We're still looking at 1999.
Oh, oh, my God, hang on. I'm sorry. Here, I've been, I've been working on that this whole time, talking to you, moving stuff around, highlighting things. Can you see that?
Yes.
There you go. I'm very sorry. That, that whole conversation makes a whole lot more sense when you're looking at this picture.
Yes, it does.
Matt, has the village approached International Chimney to talk about that?
Yes.
76, what is their take on it?
They have not opined yet.
Okay.
Can you clarify what happens to the gravel driveway that the construction people are using temporarily? Where does that fit into this?
The gravel driveway. Are you talking about the driveway that was created, that was part of the side yard?
Yes, that now Natali's using, yes.
Yeah, that's what-
So that's-
That.
Yeah, so that is in this area here. The, the intent, so that's our, that's the current gravel driveway location. So the intention is that when construction is complete, that is going to be restored to grass.
How would access, I guess they were talking about this before, how would access to the current DPW side yard be achieved then? Are they gonna drive through that paved area and just cut behind the trains?
Well, yeah, so right now, the DPW's, like, salt barn and stuff is kind of generally like in this area.
Yes.
And I think Ben's intention is to maintain that access for some period of time, you know, until we can get them out of there.
Okay.
And Matt, can you elaborate on the idea of parkland there? You mentioned park.
Oh, you're talking about like the, the park zoning?
Yeah.
Sure. Hang on a second. So this is something that hasn't gained traction yet, only because we've got a lot of irons in the fire. But I had started the, just, bear with me a second. I've started authoring this document. Can you see my Word file?
Yep.
So this is what I have dubbed. This, I'm the author of the document, so, you know, I have a lot of affinity for it, but it's, it's, it's in a very early draft phase, but it is effectively what I've called an urban open space district. And the idea is that it would identify all of those spaces that are not just park, but are considered open space. And then, the suggestion that I'm making, and I don't know that this will actually hit paydirt, but is that they, that this would not just define use, but would actually have with it zoning that would create some setback, appropriate setbacks in land use around the periphery of the urban open space. Sort of in, in the reverse, like, you know, mixed use might have a, a larger setback where it's adjacent to a residential parcel. This would have sort of the same concept, is that to, to avoid infringing on these green spaces, but rather to open them up more, projects like a Natali Development would be forced to address the periphery that, that addresses the, the park space. It would give them a larger setback around the green space to protect it more, open it up more, engage it more, as opposed to creating a, a wall of buildings along the corridor kind of thing. So hopefully improving the quality of the, of the green space, not just its quantity.
Alright, thank you.
What's the hatched area-
That's really-
By the- Cat, what's the hatched area by the, what are you proposing for there?
Well, that's another idea I had that we could create, within the concept of the urban open space zoning, that we could even create an optional overlay opportunity wherein, you know, like, homeowners like the Sipples might want to have a layer of protection applied to, you know, their 10 acres back there or something like that, and that they could, they could apply for or be included in some form of open space overlay district that would come with it certain levels of protections that might otherwise be not provided by their underlying zoning of an R2.
Okay.
How much depends on International Chimney's acceptance. Does the village have some kind of priority to force this on them?
So I can let Chip comment on that.
The village, nobody has a vested right in their zoning classification. So if the village wants to rezone International Chimney's property, your property, as long as it's based on legitimate planning principles and is consistent with the comp plan, the village can change the zoning of a property. It did it, it's done it many times. It did it when it created the MU, NMU, and R3. I mean, it changed zoning classification. That being said, do property owners challenge those things sometimes? They do. I have no idea whether that would happen here or not. Sometimes people, especially people who own commercial property, don't like to see their property downzoned, so it, that could be controversial, certainly from their perspective. But if the question is, can the village downzone somebody's property? Yes, as long as they're, have a legitimate reason to do so. Happy.
Okay, what was the rationale behind asking the Village Board to be the leader, the lead on this instead of, I mean, is that because it's a zoning issue? Is that why the-
Yeah, the, yeah, so only as I, right, the only body that can change the zoning code and change the zoning classification property is the Village Board. It, you guys have to make a recommendation with respect to that. That's built into our code, which is why Matt's making this presentation. He's looking for that recommendation, or the Village Board is looking for that recommendation, whatever that recommendation may be. But the Village Board is the only board that can change the zoning code, or change the zoning map, or change the zone classification property.
Okay.
But it can't do it without your recommendation. Doesn't mean it has to follow your recommendation, by the way, but they need, need your recommendation.
Just let me offer, I did find what I was looking for. So, can you guys see my screen here?
Yes.
So as an example, this is, this is an excerpt right out of the comp plan. The, the kind of magenta dashed line that you see there is this parcel that everyone sort of colloquially understands is South Long Park. And I'd like to point out that right here, the, the first baseline runs right through the middle of the International Chimney parcel, and the relocated tennis courts that they're showing sit within the footprint of the yellow warehouse. So over 10 years ago, the village had envisioned a sort of a manifest destiny for this whole area as with the vision that it somehow encompassed and had acquired the rights to develop on the parcel, which is currently known as the Yellow Warehouse. So from a perspective of, of conceptual land use, it has been long understood and desired that that, that current paradigm of a, of a warehouse commercial usage on this parcel is not really the, in the best long view interest of the village. So, you know-
And so now that you, I mean, bring that up, and excellent point with respect to that, but it reminds me again, as I, as a qualification of what I said before, certainly for this type of vision, I mean, this, this vision, although it doesn't say it here in looking at this figure, but this shows essentially acquiring that property. I mean, that would require a condemnation and a taking of that property. That the village can do, even like over the objection of the owner, but they would have to compensate the owner. So although any local government in New York can change the zoning of properties based on any legitimate planning criteria, but at some point, if you completely destroy the economic value of that property, or if you actually want to go out and physically appropriate that property, that, that requires compensation.
Of course.
So, I just wanted to make that distinction.
Yeah, and I, and I totally understand that. And in fact, we, we have made some, you know, discreet overtures to International Chimney. That conversation hasn't really kicked into high gear in any, you know, meaningful way at this point. The-
And just, just by way of, as I'm sure all, everyone's probably aware of, because it's gotten so much attention, you know, this is, you know, the town exercised that authority with respect to the property on Niagara Falls Boulevard and Kenmore Avenue, and has been embroiled in litigation for several years since, because the, the owner of that property didn't like that idea. Now, the town has won every step of the way in that process, but that's an example of how that process can what, what that process can lead to. I'm not, and I'm not mentioning that because I'm suggesting the village should or should not do that, I'm just, just-
Right. I have, I have no intention of, of heading in that direction. That would not be my, my desired approach to this. We, we have no intention of creating animosity with, with a long-term village asset for International Chimney. This, that, that, these two things are related only in the, in the fact that I'm, I'm bringing it to your attention that, you know, from a, from a planning process point of view, the vision for this that's been presented in the comp plan for well over a decade now, has never been to develop high-density mixed use on that parcel. It's always been envisioned as something other. And, and to that end, then, with regards to what we're discussing, the idea of downzoning this entirety, entirety of this area to an R3 to match the, the surrounding neighborhood, this singular parcel unfortunately gets scooped up in the mix because it's wedged in, in a weird place.
Does an, does anyone have any comments for Matt as far as whether they like this new- New rezoning, don't like the new rezoning, any feedback for the village board?
I like the new rezoning.
I like the idea, I think it. Yeah, it makes a heck of a lot of sense. Yeah, to do that. Yeah.
I think it's good for the neighborhood.
Matt, can I just ask on on a. On the proposed rezoning, obviously, the park, the trail get rezoned as. Our three to match the neighborhood, but. Why does the portion near Garden Parkway become NMU? Why isn't that R three as well?
It is currently NMU.
Yeah, we're sorry, that that's where I was work, you were looking at the wrong picture while I was talking, so. Today, right now. This parcel 96, this parcel, which number escapes me. 100. And this 115, they're already NMU and they have been since NMU was created. And that dates back to when it was commercial. So we're suggesting the idea of taking those three weird little parcels out of this. And knitting them back into the neighborhood so that so that the R three M that is the Natali development. Is the exception, not the rule, that the NMU be restricted to the commercial side of South Lawn. You know, rather than smattering in with the with these random little residential slots.
The the other thing, Amy, that I will add again is. If you look at the comp plan and specifically what it talks about. This. Corner of the village. And the creation and recommending the creation of the NMU, again, this was zone commercial before.
Okay.
Right or wrong, or whether we agree or don't agree. And if we, and if you don't, I mean, again, that's something the village could. Potentially revisit, but. This was specifically identified, this this area around along. South Lawn. As a potential area of redevelopment, and that's why. The comp plan was clear that it was not recommending that this be downzoned. This whole area be downzoned to low density residential. But called for this sort of neighborhood mixed use lesser density than MU, but. Greater density and flexibility than than single family zoning if if the village. Ever decided or the planning board thought that was no longer appropriate. That would require a significant, and I'm not saying that to dissuade anybody from it, but but that. Would have to update the complaint because the complaint was quite clear that this was. That this was viewed as a redevelopment, a potential redevelopment area, one of the very few in the village. Basically, the only areas the comp plan identified for redevelopment were the southwest corner and the northeast corner. And those both ended up being NMU as a result of that.
Matt, did the village, did the village board talk about that?
Oh, I'm talking about this was back in 2010, I mean.
No, I know, but I'm asking, Matt, when they. When they've come up with this current zoning proposal, was that a consideration? Right, this NMU district is surrounded by R three, was it a consideration to try to rezone that NMU district as well or no?
No, the because the NMU district is seen as a an opportunity zone. For the village and was ident, like Chip was saying, is specifically delineated in the comprehensive plan. As a desirable zone for redevelopment, in fact, it was even considered. An opportunity to create sort of a spur off of our of our business district to bring. The Main Street commercial storefront. Potentially down around the corner and down this length to a degree. Connecting what is existing high density residential here along Union at the end of South Lawn. And what is currently and has historically been some form of odd commercial properties. Getting the opportunity to maybe combine a couple of these, put something higher density in there, a couple more apartment buildings, maybe some storefront retail, whatever. And and it is a good opportunity and a good place to do that. But when you look at what's left of these goofy little parcels across the street, they're just not. They don't fit that same model, they were scooped up because that was the.
And by the way, just so everybody also understands, so. I realize you're probably not seeing my pointer, right, but 96, the the long one here right next to the Lehigh, thanks, Matt. Village owns that now, that was a that was a zombie house that the village acquired. And that house has been demolished, as Matt mentioned, the 100 right next to it is a very, very small lot. So. You know, this, I think, the the long this 96, I think, the long term vision for that, correct me if I'm wrong, man, is basically to incorporate that. Since the park. Yep, so that leaves this tiny little lot at 100, which really is not appropriate for anything other than a single family residential.
Right, which would actually effectively make it existing nonconforming. For like literally forever.
Right. And then 15 is just kind of an oddball. Piece of property.
Take take it or leave it, that that could be in, that could be out, but it just, you know. It's it's also a goofy little piece of property and not, it's not really combinable with anything. The only thing that could potentially happen is the sort of the reverse where the NMU district would almost have to be. You know, like someone might buy both of these parcels, attempt to get this rezone into a higher density and then combine them. Into a way that was actually developable to meet the NMU. So the question that I've been asking is. Do we see a bloker like apartment building? As an appropriate. Use of one or both of these parcels, for example. In this otherwise, you know, sort of single family residential street over here. Having that bar building along the street, parking in the back seems more rational.
And and as Matt pointed out, those parcels do have more of a history of being. Commercial use and and they've got more development potential just based on their size and their more regular dimensions.
Right.
But that being said, I mean, again, you're you're free to make whatever recommendation you think is appropriate. But I I just wanted to point out if 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 this board thought, hey, you know what, maybe we should rethink that whole. Idea there that would that would trigger. A need to update the comp plan for sure.
I guess my my only concern is, right, we all just. Went through a year of the bloker project and there was some community opposition to it for sure, especially the people who live in that neighborhood. Right, if if the idea is to turn that section into like a mini main street. Right, or bring a high density into it, if everything around it is R three. How is that community going to feel about that development?
So that's a legitimate question, but I would just say one, I mean, it's not everything, I mean, it's it's MU immediately to the north of it. It's R three M.
True.
Immediately to the south of it.
And and in truth, these, you know, these parcels are. Barely occupied as it is. And will not, and it's not like in doing this, we're suddenly going to start subdividing the park and putting in single family residential here. It it's going to remain volumetrically the same, you know. The the one, if if you wanted to tip your toe in that conversation, the one significant difference, I would say. Is that these parcels here are. More regular and could be combined into something larger, but aggregate. If I take the entirety of the NMU district in at the end of South Lawn. And I move it over to Evans. You'll see that the entire. Every single parcel on the west side of of South Lawn fits inside the bloker property with room to spare. So even if someone were to acquire all of these parcels. Combine them into one and put in apartment buildings that were of equivalent. Order of magnitude as the bloker property, they still would have fewer overall units than this singular parcel has. Which makes the the order of magnitude and the scaling of the NMU district highly suspect, in my opinion. And I think potentially creates the underlying angst that was associated with this application. Is that when you look at the NMU district here, there is no parcel in here. That is under. A half acre or or even more, I I'm not even sure what the size of the parcel is for. The the townhouses here along SJ, but even that being the smallest parcel is quite dense in its, you know, within its footprint. The the Drexel Hill parcel is well over nine acres. And has more density, more people per more units per square per acre than bloker will in its full out build out. So I think the the bigger issue is questioning. The scale of the NMU. Zone itself, which is a completely separate conversation and something that does need to be done. Because it is a, it is a redheaded stepchild of the MU district and it has some carryover from. What was believed to be. Reasonable based on the allowable size of parcels that are, you know, conglomerated in MU and along the strip. And never really gave a hard thought. To the developability of these parcels up here and just how vast of landmass they really are.
Yeah, I mean, they're by far the largest lots in the village.
I mean, they they, this this zone here all by itself amounts to more than 10% of the square footage of the village. And yet was not given its due when it was really. Authored, so. I'm I am, yep, I am significantly less concerned with how dense South Lawn could potentially become.
Okay, thank you, you know what, that was extremely helpful to see the comparison of that whole district versus like the bloker property. Does anyone else have any feedback for Matt? Are we in kind of general consensus that we think the new zoning is appropriate for that area?
This is Wes, I am.
Yes, if someone would be willing to make a a resolution to that effect, that would be helpful.
Am I on now?
Yes.
Okay, this is my first time, so I'm learning how to play this game. I think it's a great, great idea for what you're trying to do to protect the village. My largest concern as a resident in this neighborhood for the last 15, 20 years now. And since the Natale project has gone before this board for approval. Has been the possibility of an access to South Lawn from an Natali project. As I understand it, it's been tabled to the point of let's see how the project develops to see if that exit would be needed. It was discussed as a direct route out of the project. How would this R three affect that possibility?
It has no effect on it whatsoever.
So it keeps the door open for those future discussions.
Yep, yep.
With, and then I'm in favor of it. I don't want you to know.
All right, let's.
Matt, what what would the traffic situation be? That whole situation with the Natali project, you know, the residential neighborhoods of. Vazroboss in California, what do you, what what's your, what's your vision as far as traffic? If that area is developed?
The NMU area here, you mean? This area?
Yeah, yes.
That would be completely dependent upon what people are proposing to do. I mean, they have, they have a direct exit through Garden Parkway onto Union, they have direct access to Main Street, they can even go all the way down. Through the neighborhood to Union at the. The 90 as well, but. That conversation and what we're talking about are mutually exclusive.
What's the size of the Williams versus this one, Matt?
Well, so the Williams, Williams is up here and it combined. These. Three parcels here.
So can you, yeah. So we get an idea.
Versus.
Larger, how much larger it would be?
So you can see. So that. Green, the green is the is 76 South Lawn, the red is the Williams, so you could.
Like double, maybe something like that?
Not quite double, but you could certainly accomplish a Williams scale project on that parcel. It would be weirdly shaped, but you could do it.
And and the heights of that building would be what?
Well, it would be, if it remained MU, it would be allowed to be. Four story 50 feet.
Four four story, you said?
It's, we don't, we don't regulate stories, we regulate.
All right.
Feet, so 50 feet max, first floor. Minimum 15 feet. So as a practical matter, that means four stories.
Okay, is there anything?
Unless you want three. You know. Really tall ceilings.
Right.
Well, there's nothing in the area that large, right, but it's allowed, is basically is what you're saying.
Correct.
I mean, that's when those people bring up the fact it doesn't fit the neighborhood, but it's zoned, that's the answer right there, is that it basically?
How how tall is the Williams? I don't remember what that ended up.
It's gonna be a three story building. Yeah, well, is this three, Natalia's three, you know, the top, the apartments are three.
So wait a minute, wait, 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 this is. Oh, yeah, no, it's MU, right, MU, yeah, yeah, 50 feet. If that were NMU.
It would be around 30 something. Yep, it'd be 36 feet. Two story minimum, 36 foot max height.
Well, I would have trouble with with 50 feet, okay, I'm gonna be honest with you, okay? That's.
And that's what that's what could be done there now as an MU property. Now.
Right, so that's the, that's really sort of the underlying question.
I, although, again, we need to be a little bit careful without actually looking at it and like trying to actually put a building on there because there are. Setback requirements, although they're minimal.
They're minimal.
Well, they're, but for park lands, because there is a. There is a. NMU or MU.
That's a little used.
So.
I don't.
Lots of boundary. So 30. Actually. Somebody would have to sketch it out, I actually, because that's a bit of a screwy lot, it could be hard. I mean, how are you gonna get the, are you gonna meet that 30 foot minimum? Rear yard. Well, what's the rear yard to that? I guess it's.
The rear yard would be 40 South Lawn, it would be behind it.
Yeah, which.
Rear, this this here would be the rear yard.
Yeah, right, so now you're talking about a 30 foot setback from that. Which currently would not be, currently wouldn't be required because now it's not a district boundary, but once this.
Exactly. Right now, right now, this parcel theoretically could be built property line to property line. 50 feet tall.
Yeah, although, right, yeah.
So I guess that's that's sort of what I what I've been asking is, you know, not a question of like, how do we feel about International Chimney or what's our manifest destiny here? But really, from a land use point of view, were that to always remain privately owned? The question becomes, how do we feel about what's allowed to be used on that land? And would is the MU district and everything that comes with it appropriate for that three quarters of an acre, given its context? appropriate for that three quarters of an acre, given its context within the village? That's not a question I can answer for you. I know how I feel about it. But that's, that's why we're here.
It seems, it seems that everybody is in agreement that the proposed zoning fits with what the the village is seeking to do for that area. So is there anyone who would like to make a motion declaring our approval for that to the village board? I mean, we are, we're making a recommendation, we're not obviously approving anything, but just making a positive recommendation for this?
I'll make a motion to, for the village board to move ahead with this rezoning.
Say as, as proposed, just so we.
Proposed, yes.
The proposal in writing somewhere so you could just refer to it, I mean.
It is, it is, it's, it's a little, it's a little, you know, Wally, it's, it, it's, the, the local law basically just identifies the parcels by SBL number and says what their new zoning is going to be. But so it, it just basically lists the properties and says what their current zoning is and what the proposed zoning is. But it is essentially what's reflected in this map that Matt is up on the screen.
Get a motion and refer to that.
Wait a minute, is this a proposed screen then that, yeah?
Yeah, yeah, the, this, this, this.
Easy for Wes because I, I sense the reticence is what are we really proposing? Yeah.
Yeah, so Chip, could the motion reference that local law number that would change the zoning and just say that?
It doesn't have a number yet because it depends when it gets voted on. I, I frankly think you can, this, this is, what Matt has up there right now is basically the proposed map change. So I, I, I think it can probably just reference that. I mean, I could pull up the local, the draft local law, but frankly, this gives you a better idea of what's happening than if I, than the local law, which just lists a bunch of SBL numbers.
Okay, then I'll, then our motion will.
Oh, go ahead, Wes, I'm sorry.
I say then, by the way, uh, let me revise my motion to uh, make a recommendation to the village board to go ahead with the rezoning as per the map that's on the screen now. And I'll let you figure out how to reference that.
Yeah, and, and by the way, that, that, that map will be, will be, we're part of the, what's before the village board. So this is the same map that is part of the local law.
I have a question.
Although.
Will there be public input before this is officially done?
Oh, yeah, yep, there is, there is a public hearing that's already been open, still open, I believe, right?
Yeah, we left it open pending, pending these conversations. We actually had a public hearing on this over a year ago, right around the same time that the Natalia thing was finally coming to a close, but it, it got kind of shelved for a while just due to prior, other priorities. And then with COVID, it's just been delayed for like 12 months now. So we're just trying to get this off our docket.
Yeah, plus, plus the, the subdivision became somewhat.
Oh, yeah, subdivision, right?
So, yeah, there, there will be a public hearing, but Matt, I just wanted to point out one thing, right? Although this map doesn't include that little parcel, village-owned parcel, um, Milton, that has been merged.
Yeah, so, so this parcel right here, 135 Milton, is owned by the village and everyone sort of understands that it is physically part of and operates as a function of South Lawn Park. It is, however, currently zoned R3.
Right, all right, yep, good, good point. So that's not changing. But just so, but just so people realize, that actually has now been merged. That is no longer a standalone lot, it has now been merged into 40 South Lawn. So, so that 40 South Lawn is currently as a split.
Split zoning, yep.
Okay, so we have a, we have a motion by Wes to provide a positive recommendation to the village board for the zoning of, of this map. Is there a second?
Second.
And by Wally. Deb, do you want to do a roll call on this? Do you think we need it?
It's up to you.
It couldn't hurt.
Sure, go ahead, Deb, let's do a roll call on it.
Deb, you're muted.
Hello, sorry. Okay, Mr. Lester?
Yes.
Mr. Rizone?
I have serious concerns about, I want to join the park, I want the park to be unified, but I am concerned about what will happen with the, uh, mixed use, so I'm going to vote no.
Okay, um, Mr. Pacer?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Zasowski?
Yes.
Okay, and Miss Alexander?
Yes.
Thank you. Am I missing somebody? Nope. So that's, uh, five, yes.
What about?
Matt, Matt Carson, yeah, he's, he, he's alternate, but he, but he should be sitting tonight because we don't have a full board.
Okay, Mr. Carson?
Yes, but I'd like you not to forget about me next time.
So that is six to one, carried?
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Deb. Matt, anything else before we move on?
Nope.
Okay, the only thing left to discuss then is, uh, Tim had sent out the proposed planning board's schedule for 2021. Did everyone get a chance to look at that? Does anyone have any concerns with those dates?
Yes, uh, yeah, if you wouldn't, uh, would mind, Amy, just give me a quick rundown because I didn't see them.
Sure. Um, we're still the first Monday of the month, so they would, the dates would be January 4th, February 1st, March 1st, April 5th, May 3rd, June 7th, no meeting in July, August, oh, there you go, Tim's got them up. Thanks, Tim.
Matt did it.
Oh, thanks, Matt. Chuck, can you see those?
Yep.
Okay.
So we don't have a lot of flexibility with the Mondays because that's our scheduled date, but the only thing we'd have to discuss is, um, you know, obviously if you want to cancel any more meetings other than July, if we have any other conflicts.
It's still the first Monday, right, basically?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, we've done that, that's, that's fine.
The only exception is in September, it gets moved to Tuesday because of Labor Day.
Right, no problem.
Thank you.
All right, so yeah, if nobody has any, you know, suggestions for this, I mean, this can get altered anytime. This doesn't have to be in stone for the rest of the year, but I'm going to finalize this and get this ready for the first of the year then, um, if nobody has any real concerns.
Hey, Chip, would sometimes it be worth it to start a little earlier to get our hours in before we had a work session?
We could, we could definitely do that. I mean, I, whatever works for you guys, I think that's a really good idea, Kevin. I mean, the, you know, subject to people's schedules, if instead of having to do another night, just try to knock off an hour or something beforehand, I just don't know how people's schedules are. But, but, yeah, we could certainly do that.
That doesn't have to be public, does it?
No, training sessions are not, do not have to be open to the.
Just making sure, yeah.
So we could schedule them those dates from 6 to 7?
You could, sure.
That'd be good.
Good idea.
But I guess either Chip and Tim can kind of look into that when we can start the training.
Yeah, we could pick some dates and kind of send it around, so.
Okay, thanks.
Yep, hey, Tim, do, do, right now, is there anything you're aware of application wise, likely for November?
So November is going to be canceled. I have no applications unless anybody has something pressing to talk about or if you want to do a training.
Well, maybe we want to do a training then, if we don't have a meeting otherwise. Maybe we could do a two hour training.
Yeah, that's, that's up to the board. I can send an email around and see who's available because obviously we don't have Brad or Kate on tonight, but, um, yeah, we could shoot for that if that's your guys' pleasure.
And Tim, can you just talk about Allokit and Main, the old bank property?
Yes, yep.
Quickly, you know.
Do you have a question?
Well, what's going on and?
Okay, so that's the project you guys approved, well, the sitting board had approved back in 2019. That was a Benderson project. I don't know if you were at those meetings or not, but, um, Henderson proposed a two story project, apartments on the second floor, retail on the first floor, built to the street. You know, they're just continuing with their application, basically.
Okay, all right, thank you.
When, speaking of this, so did they pull, pull a building permit?
They had pulled, they had pulled a permit before their deadline expired.
They did, okay.
They were fighting with the state. At the time, the planning board approved a plan with a one way out on the main street where that current curb cut was.
Oh, yeah, I forgot about that.
Once they applied to the state, the state came back and said, no, we don't want you to have that.
Which we told them.
Yes, so they, they fought them and they ended up winning after they did a traffic save, but that delayed the project. So that, that's why it took a year, but they did get that approval, they submitted that to me and we're, we're proceeding now.
Hey, Tim, could I ask you about the Lili pro, uh, property there? Is there any, what's happening there? I believe there was.
Nothing at the time.
But there was a proposal made, right, correct?
Not to me. I mean, I heard some rumors of a possible project, but it never really turned in anything.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Anything else?
No.
Motion to adjourn.
All right, motion from Kevin to adjourn, any seconds?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Hey, stay safe, everybody.
Thanks, everyone.
Have a good night.
Good meeting, good meeting.
Hi, everybody.